This conference will now be recorded.
We were talking about company, company code and then chart of account yesterday. We took some example called Kia Motors and through Kia Motors we were trying to understand what will be the company, what will be the company code and what are the parameters which we need to understand. Point number one, point number one, before you start your configuration, before you start your practice, you must take one company code. For example, if I don't show any Excel sheet, if I tell, you need to be in a position to understand when somebody is talking, when somebody is giving a scenario requirement. Slowly you need to remove the dependency of looking into something, referring to something to understand. And for example, if I am explaining something now, even though I am not writing anything in Excel sheet, you need to be in a position to understand, to make sure that you are on right track. It is not that only if I write in the Excel sheet, you will be able to understand, it is not a good sign. Okay, for example, we are now talking about Kia Motors. When you are talking about Kia Motors, first point, any company name that you are taking, make sure you are aware of the company. It can be any kind of a company, it can be any nature of company, it is okay. At the end, you need to make sure, company that you are practicing, you must be aware of. In our example, Kia Motors, we are all aware that Kia Motors is all about manufacturing or selling of a cars. It is all about manufacturing and selling of a car. When you are manufacturing a car, when you are selling a car, definitely your product or service is going to be cars, servicing, accessories, likewise. Now, when you are manufacturing a car, when you are selling a car, you need to understand at how many locations in India are you operating your Kia stores or at your Kia plant? You need to understand, okay, how my manufacturing is going on? And where my manufacturing is going on? Am I operating at a one location in India or am I going to operate at multiple locations in India? Whenever we look at a point, whenever we are looking at this point, whether we are operating at one location as a Kia Motors or are we operating at multiple locations as Kia Motors in India? Usually what is going to happen at one location we are going to operate or at multiple locations? Majority, any organization that you take, they will be operating at multiple location. Next point, you need to understand is, are we using the same name of a company at multiple locations or are we changing the name of a company? Usually what you are going to do, the moment you register Kia Motors as a company in India or in any other country, you are going to prepare some kind of officially document called officially letterhead, agree? Irrespective of the location where you are operating, everywhere you are supposed to provide a document which is a legal document or official document called as a letterhead on which your company name, company address must be provided or anything that you are giving, you must put a stamp or a seal. Here, your stamp, your seal or your letterhead is with the same name or with a different name. Address can be different because you, as we understood in yesterday's session, when you are operating at a multiple location, at every location depending on the municipality, depending on the tax authorities, you are going to do a local registration called tax registration or municipal registration, those are different. Forget about the address, what is your name, your organization name, your company name, is it still going to be the same or it is going to be different? It is going to be the same all over India because you are dealing the same brand all over India. Maybe you are operating in different, different locations to be reachable to the customer more closely and to make sure your services, products are available at multiple location. That does not mean every company name, every address change will trigger a new company code is your wrong understanding. Your company code is strictly based on name of an organization which is officially legally registered as per Companies Act. For one company name, there will be one registration, for one registration, there is a single CR. You either call it as a company registration or you call it as a commercial registration, in short, you call it as a CR copy in real time. When you are talking about where is a CR copy, CR copy is nothing but commercial registration copy or company registration copy. The Indian or the register of companies, whenever they register your company name, they are going to provide a certificate stating. They are going to provide a certificate stating, this is the name that is officially registered for your company and accordingly they are going to provide, meaning officially registered company name, officially registered company address will be provided. This will be the base for you to set up company, for you to set up company code. Now, as per this discussion, as per our understanding, even though Kia Motors is operating in multiple locations in India, even though Kia Motors is operating at multiple locations in India, are we still going to create a single company code or separate company code for each location? It is strictly a single company code, never going to be a multiple company code unless and until it is a separate company name. Don't decide by the location, don't decide by the address, always decide by the name. Always decide by the name, here most of the times we may be having a confusion. You need to avoid certain confusions at the beginning itself. Otherwise what will happen, you may end up creating multiple company codes within India for same Kia Motors. Several company codes you may be creating, assuming that for every location there is a separate company code. It is not like that, nobody will do it in the entire world, you also please don't do it. One company name, one company code strictly, no matter what, all over the world it is the same logic. There is nothing in you that you are innovatively thinking, there is nothing in you, I am innovatively thinking. We need to think, understand it, do the same point as it is used universally by every project. Okay, next one, you need to understand about company. When you are talking about company, company is just a representation of company code. Company is just a representation of company code or copy of company code. If you are creating a company code, usually there are two ways. You are going to call company and then company code. We are going to call company, company code, if I take an Excel sheet. Let us say, step one, company. Step two, company code. Step three, assignment, assignment of above through, above three. Normally, what is our logic, how do you do the config? We will create company first, we will create company code next. We will do the assignment last, meaning step number one, company, step number two, company code, step number three, assignment. Here, there is no logic. When you define a company, there is no logic there, like this is how you need to create, likewise there is no logic to create a company. Here, this is based on logic, assignment straight forward. Connect one and two, is this correct? Are these three, okay, clear to understand? When you create a company, there is no logic to create a company. You cannot say, at this level I am creating a company, there is no such logic. When you are creating a company code, it is strictly based on a logic, just like that you cannot create company code. Because your company code is created based on the legal registration of a company name. Legal registration of a company name, now here you are not supposed to get confused between company and company code, legal entity. In real time, in your general terminology, everything is representing a company where your official transactions are happening. When you are talking about for which company you are working, what's your company, all this kind of thing, everybody is representing, though they are talking about company in terms, but they are intending to talk about company code only. Because yesterday we understood at company level, there is nothing. You do nothing at company level in SAP, there is nothing which is happening, there is nothing which you are creating, there is nothing which you are generating, there is nothing which you are configuring at company level, everything is taken care at company code level. Though somebody is talking a company, they are referring to company code only. Don't get confused, don't be very particular about the terminology, especially in SAP FICO because many people will use different terms alternatively. Somebody wants to show that they know better than other person, somebody will get confused, they will talk. Though somebody is talking to show that they know better SAP, somebody is talking with confusion. From your side, you need to make sure you are able to understand based on the situation, based on the scenario. That's where your understanding comes into picture. Somebody is telling in a different way, you don't understand in an incorrect way. Relating to that particular situation, particular statement, particular scenario, you try to understand what they are intending to talk. Okay? When we say company is no logic to create a company, company code is strictly based on a logic. Your logic is based on the registration that is done according to the Companies Act of a particular country. And then assignment is a straightforward connection of one and two. Connect company with company code or connect company code with company, either ways you tell it is okay. At the end, these two are to be connected, that's all. Join these two, that is your assignment. Whether I am joining one with two, two with one, it doesn't make any difference. When I see in one box, I need to put one and two, whether I am putting one first to two first, immaterial. When I look at the box, inside the box, I should find one and two, which is sequence you are going to put, it's up to you. Just put one, two in single box and then close the box, that's all. Okay, now here, you always go with a point where there is a logic, where is the logic now? Where is the logic? Company code has got a logic. Now, when you are configuring, you need to first create company or company code. When you are creating, you should always go with a logic. Wait, there is a logic, you do it first, which one we are supposed to do first, company or company code? You should always create company code first, even in your project, please create company code first, not company. The moment you are starting a company, the moment you are opening doors for the confusions, don't open doors for confusion, close the confusing doors. Because you should always go by a logic, in SAP FICO especially, everything is based on logic, there is no magic in SAP FICO. It's all logic, no magic. Alright, my company is Kia Motors. India Private Limited, if I say my company, meaning my registered company name is Kia Motors Private Limited. Now, this registered name is nothing but my company code in SAP, am I correct? For example, I may be using my company code, let us say as 1000, just assume that I am going to create my company code as 1000, is this a statement clear? Everybody clear with this, point number two, company code? Any doubt on this statement number two, company code? Company code is basically the name of an organization, name of a company which is officially registered as per Companies Act. You will have a proof here, you will have a registration certificate called a CR or commercial registration certificate issued by register of companies or company's authority, company authority. You will have a proof here that this is my legally registered company name. If you have two registration certificates, you are going to create two company codes. If you have ten registration certificates on ten different names, ten company codes will be created. If you have a single registered name, you are going to create a single company code irrespective of the locations that you are operating. If you are operating in twenty-five locations, hundred locations, but you have registered a single company name, you will be creating a single company code, clearer? Always go ahead with the name that is registered, is it a single name or is it multiple names? Single name, single company code, multiple names, multiple company codes.
If the client wants for one legal company, can we have more company codes based on their requirement, is it allowed or not?
Impossible, not possible. Not only at SAP point of view, even in general also you cannot do it. At the end, your financial statements are prepared at a legal entity level, agree? Your financial statements are prepared at a legal entity level irrespective of the application that you are using. Forget about SAP, if you are a Kia Motors, for example, you are a CA. You know what a CA does, right, chartered accountant? And then you are doing auditing. You are doing auditing of financials, agree? You are doing auditing of financials and then you need financial statements of Kia India to be audited or like Hyderabad, Mumbai, Chennai, Pune, Bangalore like this separately, how do you want?
Generally, as a legal entity wise, the audit is done.
Alright, anybody is going to audit Kia Hyderabad separately, Kia Mumbai separately, if you are doing it, that is called as a internal audit, am I correct? You are auditing internally at each store level, you are auditing internally at each division level, at each department level. At any level, you can do the audit internally to make sure when you submit the data to the external auditor, everything will be smooth. Is this correct? To anyone, you are providing the documentation, your financial statement, for example, balance sheet, if I take balance sheet of Kia Motors India Private Limited as on, for example, if you prepare for current month, current month balance sheet will be as on thirty-first August 2024. Is this what the heading you are supposed to put for your financial statement? But I cannot say Kia Motors Private Limited in bracket Bangalore in bracket Mumbai, can I put that? If you put that, next minute your auditor will throw your financial statement, agree? He will, he will get out from there, he will tell, this is not correct. Meaning this is the basic fundamental from the accounting point of view, which we need to understand. For any organization, for any organization, financial statements are always prepared at legal entity level, in short, at company level. No matter how many locations you have, no matter how many branches you have, how many departments you have, please give me consolidated balance sheet, that is why you will never put only the balance sheet, you will always put a statement called consolidated balance sheet of Kia Motors India Private Limited. Meaning you need to consolidate all the divisions, all the departments, all the branches, locations of Kia Motors India Private Limited. You need to consolidate all the transactions of Kia Motors India Private Limited. Now, this Kia Motors India Private Limited is a single registered company or multi-registered company, that name. It is a single registered company, you have to produce everything under that name only because you sold in India, in any location, Hyderabad, Mumbai, Chennai, everywhere your official document is going by name of Kia Motors India Private Limited, agree? Irrespective of the location, your transactions are representing this name only, right? All your official transactions, your bank accounts, everything is in the name of this or any other name? Agree? Tomorrow, if your company wants to open a bank account called as a current account, bank is going to ask for your commercial registration certificate, company certificate. Based on the company name only, bank will open your account, in short, your current account, is this statement correct? Bank is going to open your current account, meaning your company's current account in the name of a company, you cannot add anything there. Because it is a bank account which is provided for a company. Company is represented by a company name which is registered issued by the register of companies or as per Companies Act. Are these statements making sense? Right, accordingly, you are going to have your bank account even when tomorrow when you go to a printing press to get a print. Print in the sense to get a stamp, because on certain documentations you will have to put stamp, right? Somebody paid money, you need to put receipt. Or to somebody you have given, you have given anything, you need to put a stamp legally on certain documentation, you will have to input this stamp. When you are going to the stamp vendor, you need to make sure you will create a stamp. Your stamp is going to have what name, Kia Motors Private Limited or any other name? Your stamp is also going to be Kia Motors, maybe you are adding different address. Kia Motors Hyderabad, Kia Motors Chennai, Mumbai, X branch, Y branch, Z branch. But at the end, name is the same, right? You are, are you supposed to change this? You have any right authority to change this name? Because this is officially registered, this is legally registered, you are doing legal business, you are talking about legal entity. Legal entity is nothing but company code. If it is a one name, no more questions, no more confusions, straight away, one name, one company code. Two names, two company codes, three names, three company codes, thousand names, thousand company codes. Strictly based on the number of registrations that you have done, against that you are going to decide how many company codes. Else, there is no point for you to decide or you have no authorization to decide that I will create five company codes for my reporting purpose, ten company codes for my reporting purpose, not allowed. If that is the situation, if that is the situation, you are going to talk about I will create something like this. This is only for the reporting purpose you are asking, right? I want to know how much profit I am getting from Hyderabad, how much profit I am getting from Mumbai, how much profit I am getting from Chennai or in each branch, in each location, in each store, what is my profit loss, what is happening? Definitely everybody wants to know, agree? Definitely everybody wants to know at each branch level, at each location level, at each store level, at each region level, state, state level, city level. Definitely you will have the reporting requirement to pull the various kind of information. For that, you have options below the company code, not at company code, not above the company code. It is always below the company code, you will have lower level reporting or drill down of your overall financials. That is where you would have heard something called Profit Center. Anybody heard something called Profit Center term? Business area, New Zealand, COPA, these are the terms anybody heard, let us say. Cost center. Profit center. Those who are not talking, please mute yourself once you are done with your talking. Cost center, profit center, business area, I will say. Anytime anybody heard these, these terms, cost center, profit center, business area, COPA, New Zealand, document splitting, etc. These are all used, these are all used to segregate your financials at various level. At what level, it purely depends on your reporting requirement. Because from your side, from your business point of view, you may be wanting to analyze the reports at a different level. Somebody else may be wanting to analyze the report at a different level. It is purely dependent on the business, on the company to decide at what level they need further reporting for their various analysis purpose, for their strategic decision purpose. In short, it is your internal reporting purpose, you can generate your reports at various level using these terms. What are these, we will understand later on, but these terms alone you keep in your mind. Cost center, profit center, business area, COPA, document splitting segment. These are all used to pull your reports at various other levels. Okay, now based on this, all you need to remember, all you need to understand is here company code is strictly created based on number of legal registrations that you have. That is the only base, beyond that there is nothing. That is the only base, beyond that there is nothing. When you understand these point, it will be very clear for you to understand. If these points are missing in your mind, it may be creating unnecessary confusion. Smitha, can you please mute? I think there is a noise from your side. Okay. Okay, now, this 1000 will be your company code considering the number of registrations that you have done is a single. Now, for company, when I said there is no logic, you can create it in any way. In the yesterday's session, what did we understand, which logic are we currently using in the projects? One is to one or N is to one? We will be using one is to one, you also should use one is to one only strictly. You have to strictly use one is to one, what is your company code? What is your company code number, 1000? Blindly Ctrl C, Ctrl V here, don't do anything, don't think about anything. Come here, Ctrl C, come here, Ctrl V, done. And you are connect one and two, this is nothing but 1000 is equal to 1000, that's all. There is no role of company in your SAP. There is no role of a company in SAP, it is only created for the purpose of your baseline configuration begins from it, that's where you are doing it. You ignore this, you will never be stuck anywhere. Don't do any company, don't do any assignment, meaning even if you ignore step number three, step number one. Don't do step number one, don't do step number three, you start your practice and all, you will not get stuck anywhere until you do some intercompany transaction. Till you perform some intercompany transaction, you don't get stuck anywhere. Nowhere you will be stuck, nowhere you will find a difference, nowhere you will find a problem. Because this is not creating any impact, you are not doing anything at this level at entire SAP level. These are used only to understand your intercompany relationship. When you are talking about intercompany relationship, basically you are going to represent something called affiliated company, non-affiliated company, remember this is what we discussed in the yesterday's session? Affiliated company, non-affiliated company, I am going to decide whether my company code is affiliated company or non-affiliated company with the help of this assignment. With the help of this assignment, when you are talking about intercompany transaction, when you are talking about intercompany transaction, are we talking about a transaction between two company codes? Intercompany transaction, there are two terms here, one is intercompany and another one is intracompany, don't get confused between these two. When you are talking about intercompany transaction, this may be 1000, 2000, company code 1000, company code 2000 are doing a transaction is called as intercompany transaction. When you are talking about intracompany transaction, this is 1000 to 1000. Intracompany means 1000 to 1000, intercompany means 1000 to 2000, is it clear? Two are possible, intercompany, intracompany, this I would say Kia India to Kia Dubai, possible or not? Here, India may be doing any kind of a transaction with Kia Dubai, that is called as your intercompany transaction. When I am talking about here, I may be talking about When I am talking about here, I may be talking about. Kia India, let's say Hyderabad. Kia India. Mumbai, is this also possible?
Yes.
Right, this is also possible. Mukund, you'll have to please mute when you are not talking, because there is a noise from your side. Okay, when you are having a transaction within the company, meaning Kia India. Hyderabad the location to Kia India Mumbai location or Kia India one store to another store. One city to another city, one branch to another branch, one department to another department, finance department to admin department. Admin department to some other department, these are all called as for intracompany transaction, are these two terms clear?
We are also saying, sir, branch. Interbranch transfer.
You need to see whether, whether those two are from same company code or different company code, this is the differentiator, this is only an example. The differentiator is whether two branches are from the same company code or two branches are from a different company code. It is possible, every company code will have several branches. Now, these two branches, whatever you are referring, if those two are part of the same company code. Then it is intracompany transaction. If those two branches are from two different company codes, then it is called as intercompany. Your intercompany, intracompany is always identified with this point. With this point, this is called as company code. If these are two separate company codes, intercompany, if these two are same company code, intracompany. Okay, if these two are separate company codes, it is intercompany. If these two are the same company code, then it is called as intracompany transaction. Intracompany can be between plant to plant, location to location, branch to branch, division to division. Cost center to cost center, profit center to profit center, it can be anything. You are only concerned about company code here. Now, intercompany means you have two company codes here. For example, if I take intercompany this example. For this, nothing is required because this is within company code, no additional understanding, no additional setting, nothing is required here. No action on point number two because it is intra. By default, you are going to record every transaction at company code level. It is taken care by default, we need to do nothing from our side. When you take this example. How many company quotes are involved in this transaction in any, in any intercompany transaction, one or two?
Two companies.
Alright, one thousand and two thousand, agree? These two are two separate legal entities or same legal entity? Two separate legal entities. Now, thousand is a company code, this is also a company code, am I correct?
Yes, sir. Yes.
There's something called org structure or as per your SAP FICO baseline configuration. You are going to define three configuration step. Company, company code, assignment of company code to company, agree?
Yes.
As per that, you need to look at if your company code one thousand is assigned to. Company one thousand. This is also assigned to company code, one, company one thousand. This is one possibility, is there or not? Is it possible or not possible?
Yes, sir.
Same thing, what I'll do, I'll try to put it in a different way. One thousand to one thousand, two thousand to two thousand, this is also possible?
Yes, sir.
Both are possible. Now, with the help of this, with the help of this. Whether your company codes, whether all your company codes are assigned to same company. Or all your company codes are assigned to a different company, this is going to differentiate between. Affiliation. Relationship. When we say affiliation relationship, you are talking about. Affiliated company. Non-affiliated company, that's it. So if your, all company codes are using same company, I may say affiliated company, an example. If I tell every company code is using a separate company, then I may call it as. Non-affiliated company, based on this, SAP will determine certain GL accounts when you are posting intercompany transaction. Based on this, SAP will be determining some intercompany transaction, for example, if I show one screen here.
So twelve minute, uh, this cross company for transactions, uh, whether is it not, is it not compulsory to have one company? So one to N relation?
That is nowhere in, in the picture, because of that, nothing is going to happen, your intercompany transaction will have nothing to do with your company. It is only to differentiate between affiliated and non-affiliated company. That is only identification that you are going to use it, otherwise strictly there is nothing.
Generally, uh, when we have more company codes. So, uh, when we do consolidation of all the company codes, we eliminate the intercompany transactions. For the consolidation purpose, whether is this achieved with this uh, one to one uh, uh, relation?
No. You can achieve it because what you are going to do is, you can also call it as a global company. And you will be using a term called a trading partner, you would have heard a term called a trading partner?
Yes, sir, uh, I have more questions about trading partners, can you explain that now?
That, once we are on the intercompany transaction, you will be able to understand because that is straight away related to this one. Now you have something called intercompany asset transfer here.
Yes, sir.
Right? You have something called intercompany asset transfer, meaning transfer of asset between two, this one. If I open anyone. Let's say anywhere. There is something called affiliated company. Can you see something called affiliated company here? Can you see something called affiliated company here also?
Yes.
If I open anyone. If I open anyone, there is a posting type called post to affiliated company, do not post to affiliated company. What assist, now if you look at this, this radio button, this radio button, system is going to behave in a different way or it will behave the same. System will different in a different way, how system is going to understand whether it is affiliated and non-affiliated, it is with the help of. This point. This is the point where your system is understanding affiliated, non-affiliated, meaning. Company, company code are assigned to same logic or company, company codes are assigned in a different logic, meaning. Is it the same company for all the company codes which are part of your intercompany transaction? Or these two are using two different companies which are part of your intercompany transaction, point number one. Two company codes are having the same company, point number two, two company codes are having two separate companies. Right? Depending on your configuration, you have to decide certain settings related to intercompany in SAP, it is not like. My understanding is this I'll do it, my understanding is this I'll do it, this has got a logical connection with other topics called intercompany in SAP. Without knowing those connecting a point, just like that, you do not have to come to any conclusion, do not define anything because you saw somewhere. You may not be knowing the end point. Why you don't get, what is the benefit of doing it, why you need to do it? As I mentioned, in the projects, whatever is currently happening everywhere. Majoritely, the point that we will be using, that everybody will be using, is option number one or option number two. Same company or separate company.
Same company.
Same company. I am talking about this point, is it same or different, column number D. If you have two company codes, let's say option number one. It's this. One, one minute. My Excel is stuck, one second. What I mean to say, option number one is your orange highlight, option number two is your green highlight. Are we going to use green highlight option or orange highlight option?
Orange highlight.
In the project.
The second one.
Green, green highlight, second one.
Second one will be used, not the first one. Not the first one, it is always the second one, it is strictly second one currently. With your lo, with your level of experience, whoever is projecting, whoever is telling. That you have three year of experience, four year of experience, five year of experience, strictly go with green highlight, one to one relationship, not. N to one, not one to N. Strictly talk, in your project, you have defined one company code is equal to one company. You have ten company codes, you have one company code, hundred company codes. It is immaterial, strictly tell to everybody that you created one is to one relationship, that's it. Why one is to one, as we progress, you will understand because we have not started any configuration yet. Once we start our configuration, when we start pulling the reports and all, at various levels of configuration, I will tell why we are adopting this option. Just a minute, let me reopen this Excel sheet.
Uh, okay, so, does the second one show, it is affiliated one, like, just confuse with the terms?
Which one?
I mean, the second one, uh, one company code to one company, that is one is to one, it shows the affiliated relationship, is it right?
No, non-affiliated, these are not same, no? Affiliated means you are connecting to same. Okay, so these points we will discuss later on. You, at this moment, you need to understand only this point, that when you create two company codes. You are creating a two company code, two companies, only this point. They extract from the discussion, at the end, the summarize, summarization of this discussion is, you are practicing with this logic. You are practicing with this logic. Only then, when you talk to somebody, they feel. Comfortable, confident that yes, you know how we are doing company code setup in SAP, if you are talking this. You are welcoming the multiple cross questions from the other people because this is not used currently. When this is not used, when you are telling this is how you did it, you are giving a representation that you are a trained candidate. If you wanted to get a. Representation that you may be a possible trained candidate, you can talk this, I have no object, objection here. You do it, you do it, it's okay because at any point of your company code. Configuration, posting, report, this is not going to create any effect anywhere. There is no effect, there is no impact with. Your company anywhere, even if you don't create your company, it is okay, nothing is going to happen, you will not get stuck anywhere. Even if you do not create the company. You are just creating just to identify the relationship, is it one to one, N to one, that's it. Meaning, whether you are following company code to company relationship as one to one or N to one, as I said, it is followed one to one. As I said, it is followed one to one, you, as I also mentioned, you check with your friends who are working in SAP FICO. Ask them to do this configuration step, one to one, N to one. Majoritely, it is one to one. Those who are using SAP from long time, maybe N to one, but those who are currently working, those. Projects who are implemented in the recent past years, everywhere it is one to one. When you know everywhere it is one to one, why do you want to tell one to one, N to one? When you know that this is not happening, if you do not know the points you are talking, it is okay. But after knowing, still you want to go with one to one, nobody can help. You getting my point? There are certain things which you need to follow as everybody is following. The moment you deviate from there, the moment you talk something different, that is where people are asking you so many cross question because. This is not we are following, how come you did like this, why you did like that, what exactly the scenario you had to do it? Why did you not do one to one? Do you have any answers for it? If somebody is asking you like this in the interview. All of a sudden, you may not be able to answer, right? You may be thinking, no, in my practice, I did like this. In your mind, it is triggering your practice, that should not happen. If your practice is proper, you will talk in a proper way. If your practice is improper, you will talk in a improper way, everything is based on your practice. That is one of the reason why I did not give server to anybody. I know if I give server to everyone, I know the way you practice. When I know, when we know, there are certain areas where you and I should not go wrong, we have to be aligned. Only then it is possible for us to understand because. If I am doing things in a different way, you are practicing things in a different way, you will get lot of confusions which. Is not at all recommended. Here, you are here to clarify your confusions, not increase your confusions. Your confusions should go out, clarity, confidence should come. For that to happen, we need to go at a slower pace, these are all the basic fundamental. They are all basic fundamentals, so far you would not have thought you should create one to one, agree, most of you? You would have thought it is N to one, all these days?
Yes, sir.
But in the project, we don't follow this, how many of you know it, that we don't follow this in the project? How many of you know that this is not followed in the projects? Those who are working, please go back and verify your company, company code relationships, you will understand. When we know this is how. We are working, this is how consultants are defining, or this is how companies are setting up in SAP. In any project, you should also tell the same thing. You should tell this one only when you have a valid justification, only if you really did it. In your project, this is how it was there, please tell the same thing. But in our case, it is not the situation where we have seen in our project, am I correct? Anybody saw in your project, this one? No, if it is not the situation, you need to talk valid content, you need to, you need to tell something which is accepted by the other person. To tell something that is accepted by the other person, please follow option number two. One company for one company code. Ten company codes is equal to ten companies, hundred company codes is equal to hundred companies, as simple as that. Ctrl C, Ctrl V from company code to company. Whatever you have in company. Simply copy paste here, simply copy paste, don't think anything, not required. Don't have any confusion, tell this is how you need to do it. This is how you need to do it. Here, there is no point of any confusion, you will have a little more clarity, once we start doing the configuration, point number one. Once we start posting the transaction, point number two, once we start pulling the report, you will have more clarity on it. Because at that time, I will be able to show you SAP, I will be able to explain you different points with logic. There you will have further clarity on it, but at this moment, you need to keep in your mind, it is strictly one to one relationship. It is strictly one to one relationship, clear? Blindly fix this in your mind, no manipulations, no confusions, know this ones. Straight away, put it in your mind, one is to one relationship is what you are following, is what you followed in your project. Is what you will follow in your future project, that's it. For certain ways, there is no much clarification. Because company doesn't have a logic. Because company is not created on any logic, it is created only to understand whether you are affiliated, non-affiliated. That too from asset accounting point of view, in the asset accounting system is going to look at it. Accordingly, you need to maintain account determinations at another setting, otherwise it has got no definition anywhere. Suresh, can you please mute?
Sir, one question.
I'll, I'll take the questions, we'll have Q and A session in the tomorrow's session and then day after tomorrow. I'll be spending dedicated time for clarifying all the questions whatever everybody has got. Once today's session is over, in the tomorrow's session and then on day after tomorrow's session, meaning Friday's session, Saturday's session will have additional time, additional hours to clarify all the questions whatever are raised. It's okay, even if it takes two hour, I'll sit for two hours and then clarify all your answers. As I said, please make a note of your questions. Tomorrow and day after, we will exclusively spend the time to clarify all the questions, doubts, whatever everybody is having. That is one point that you need to remember, and one more thing that you need to remember here is something called chart of accounts. Here also, it is always single operating chart of account. This is common for all the company codes of Kia. Is this clear? When you are talking about chart of account, you will be creating a single chart, single operating chart of account. Especially when you are talking about any chart of account, you need to make sure you are specifically representing a term called operating the chart of account, never call chart of account as a chart of account. Always call it with operating chart of account, because there are two more chart of accounts called country chart of account, group chart of account, the intention, purpose of group, country is different. Intention of operating chart of account is to post your day-to-day business transaction. Your day-to-day debit credit accounting entries are posted with the help of operating chart of account. So to anybody when you are telling, you have to strictly mention something you called operating chart of account, if you are missing this operating term, you are telling only the chart of account, you will get immediate cross question, what kind of a chart of account are you using? Country, group operating, you have to specify operating without fail. There are certain things which you need to follow, which you need to mention, where irrespective of the question, irrespective of the other, other person. Whether they are asking, they are not asking, from your side, when you are explaining, when you are telling, please make sure certain parameters you do not skip. This is universal fact, all your company codes will have the same chart of account. All your company codes will have the same chart of account, I will tell you one more point here, I will tell you one more point here. Reason for confusions. Reason for confusion, there is a common reason why most of you are confused. Most of you already practiced SAP, already seen something in SAP, agree? Majority of you?
Yes, sir.
Yes, no? Now here, assuming somebody is already practiced, let's say five company codes or three company codes. Possible? Somebody practicing the three company codes is possible or not?
Yes.
Very much easily possible. Now, if somebody is practicing the three company codes, ideally, what they will do? Company code number one, maybe Kia. Company code number two, maybe Dell, company code number three, maybe Sony. Ideally, three company code practice, most commonly, majoritely, what people do is, three separate companies, am I correct or not?
Correct.
This is most commonly taken strategy approach for everybody, of course, from your side, you are correct, from your side, you are correct. But you are missing many other practical connecting dots, that is where confusions are coming. You are creating three company codes, here you are creating one chart of account, here creating second chart of account, here you are creating three chart of account. If you practice three company codes, if you create three company codes, in this situation, how many chart of accounts are you creating?
Three.
Three.
One.
Here, here, three chart of accounts, right?
Yes, sir.
According to this, according to this statement, if you have three company codes, how many chart of accounts you will be creating?
One.
One.
I say Kia, second also Kia, third also Kia. Here, chart of account will be one COO, here also single, here also single, it is not going to be one-two-three, it is only one everywhere. While we are practicing, these points are striking our mind or not, are we thinking these points? Are we considering these points while practicing, majoritely, it is no, agree? Because when you are practicing, you are practicing Kia, you, you will create one company code, you will do settings one time, you will say that, okay, it's working, I'm able to post, report is coming, then you will practice one more time, maybe after some time, after a few days, few weeks, few months. Again, you will practice one more company called Dell, here also you will create separately, here also you will create separately, but anywhere you are able to connect Kia multiple business processes, Kia business process and all, or the structure of Kia, how we are going to define. Or we are directly going to the configuration by looking at config document, material, X, Y, Z content. What will be the approach, most commonly used approach? You refer a document and then straight away you will start configuring, the way you have been taught, the way you have seen. Because those who practice not necessarily to get trained, right? All these things you find on YouTube for free of cost. How to create company, how to create company code and all. But there, you will be only creating a company, practically when you talk, if you are in a project, is it possible for you to be in Kia, Dell, Sony project at a time?
No. No.
If you are working, you will be working only for Kia, if you are working, you will be working only for Dell, if you are working, you will be working only for Sony, am I correct?
Yes.
In the real environment. Am I correct or not?
Yes, sir.
Right, if you are in Kia, if you are working for twenty company codes, if you, if Kia has got twenty company codes, how many chart of accounts will be there?
One.
Only one chart of account, only one chart of account, if you are in Dell, for example, Dell has got twelve company codes, how many chart of accounts will be there?
One.
One, if Sony has got, let's say, forty company codes, how many chart of accounts will be there?
One, sir.
One.
It is a single chart of account, but when you are practicing it, are we thinking these points? Okay, I am practicing, in my practice, it is like that, but in real time, it is like that, are we thinking anytime? Or we are directly practicing these points? We are not going to think these points will not strike our mind when we are practicing because when you are practicing it, our focus is only on what setting I need to do, what T-code I need to follow, what information I need to pass, whether I am getting any error, I am not getting any error, you are completely focusing on this setting, T-code that you are using, agree? What is the T-code, whether it is working fine, not working fine, at the end, if it is working fine, you feel happy, yes, I am able to do it. It is working fine, your settings are working fine, but why you did that setting, you may not be thinking. Why you did that setting, you may not be thinking, there are many points which you need to understand before you do the configuration. Before you do the configuration, there are many things that we need to think, we need to understand. Only then practically, you will gain the confidence, otherwise, you will technically complete the configuration because you have some content or you understood how to do this setting, you go to this T-code, add a new entry, put A, B, C, D, one, two, three, four, save it, it is all over. Your config is correct, nobody will tell you are wrong, you are correct. But the moment you are asked to explain why you did this configuration, you are blank. Because you are in, you are unable to explain, you are unable to convince the reason, logic, requirement, scenario that you configured. You are the one who configured, you do not know why you configured. Most of the times, most of the times, you may be creating many company codes for your practice, anytime anybody saw or anybody created a company code, posted entries before. Yes, no? Anybody practiced SAP FICO before, created company codes, yes, no?
Yes, yes.
Yes, sir.
Right? Majority of you would have done it, anytime after posting entries, anybody got any doubt anytime to see trial balance in SAP?
No.
Anytime this point struck your mind?
No, sir.
Why? Everybody knows accounting, you know that what is a trial balance, is it important or not important?
It's important.
It is important. Now, why you did not get any thought that you need to look at the trial balance once you start posting the document? Why you did not get any thought? Or why it did not strike your mind that I should look at my TB trial balance? Any particular reason? Or you, you never thought, you, you are not aware of it? Remember, in SAP, there is something called, everybody talks about implementation project, remember?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Right, everybody talks about implementation, implementation is incomplete without a trial balance, how many of you know this? If you don't have trial balance, your project will not be completed. Any project in SAP is dependent on trial balance to go live, you might have heard something called go-live, right? Anybody heard a term called go-live?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Go-live is possible only with the help of trial balance. Only with the help of trial balance, meaning your legacy balances are supposed to be uploaded into SAP with the help of TB. You do not know trial balance, you have not seen the trial balance, you have posted accounting entries in all the areas you would have posted. GL, AP, AR, cash, bank, tax, BRS, APP and all, but not even a single time you would have seen trial balance. Not even a single time, you would have seen the PNL, not even a single time, you would have seen balance sheet. Every month, you know that you need to prepare TB PNL balance sheet, yes or no?
Yes, sir.
Right, there is another point called interview question, interview topic, specifically month-end activities.
Yeah.
At the end of every month, every company will have to prepare TB PNL balance sheet. Yes or no? Is it mandatory or optional for any organization?
It is mandatory.
It's mandatory.
It is mandatory, now people may be practicing for more than a month, yes or no?
Yeah.
At any point of time, you must be in a position to know what is your profit-loss position, right? Whether you are making profit, whether you are making loss, what is your asset position, what is your liability position, how do you look at it? Anybody got any idea, anybody strike these thoughts to check, how do I check? If you know these points, you will not blindly post the entries, you are not supposed to do it. You are supposed to post entries only when you know what you are doing it, otherwise, your company code is a scrap material. It's like a scribbling book that an LKG student, nursery kid is writing, they don't write any, anything, not even A, B, C, D, all scribblings you will find, if you look at that book, open it, even though you cover it with nice, put nice covering and then nice sticker name and all, computer printed, the moment I open the first page, I will find all the scribbling. I will tell this is useless, agree? If I take your company code in your system, if I ask you to, can you show me the trial balance? And when you tell with confidence, I did practice until GL, AP, AR, asset accounting, everything. Simple question I will put, can you open your company code? Okay, show me how many entries you posted, okay, can you pull the trial balance from your company code? If you, can you tell, I don't know? After telling I practiced for three months, I am very confident, I can tell you FICO. If I ask you a simple question, can you show me trial balance, I just want to see how TB looks like in SAP? Is it a good situation for you to tell I do not know TB or it's a bad situation? It is, it is a very bad situation for anybody, not only to you, to anybody. Who knows accounting, who is writing debit credit, a single journal entry, TB PNL balance sheet is mandatory? Right, when you tell that you practiced SAP, you did configuration, X, Y, Z and all, you are not able to tell, you are not able to show the TB. Is your practice using you for anything? Is it practice useful? Practically, if you go to the market, is that useful?
No, not useful.
That is useful, when you are talking to your friend, I did this, you did this, I did this, you did this. Your friends comparison, you may be hero, but when you go to the market, you will be zero. If you tell, I do not know trial balance, you don't even feel comfortable to tell I do not know, that no will make you so uncomfortable. Because you know, yes, TB, I am not able to how can I say that I don't know TB from SAP, when I am a FICO consultant, when I am practicing from last three months? Is my statement valid or invalid?
So valid.
Right, you will have to question like this. When you question like this to yourself, you will understand a different part. When we understand a different point, going forward, to anybody you will sell, you will tell that, I know how TB looks like in SAP, how TB works in SAP. You will tell, I uploaded the TB in my previous project, I know how data migration happens. I know how we load legacy balances into SAP. That conference is different, when you tell, I don't know TB, I have not seen in TB in my practice and all, that conference is different. There is a huge difference. When I say there is a huge difference, the other person will not even continue talking to you, having heard from you, you do not know TB in SAP. What is the point of you telling anything, I did AP, I did AR, asset, cash, bank and all, when you do not know the TB? Because without a trial balance, no SAP project will go live. No SAP project will go live without a trial balance, if you do not believe me, ask with your friends who are working as SAP FICO consultant, what is the importance of a trial balance in any implementation project, in any rollout project, can you complete the project without a trial balance, ask anybody? And see, if anybody is going to tell yes for it? Then you will understand reality, reality is different, what you assume, what you imagine is different. Practically, whatever happens in the project, you don't get outside. Your Google and all will not give you what practically happens, this is only the educational purpose, your education is different, your reality is different. There is a huge difference, huge variance which you need to identify, understand accordingly. It is purely your responsibility, don't think that you are learning SAP FICO, meaning you know everything, you get everything, no. You need to put your efforts a lot. See, anybody who is teaching you SAP or anybody who knows that you are from account background, will anybody, even in their dream, think that you don't know TB? That point, first of all, will not even come to anybody's mind, right? Everybody is under an impression, you know what is trial balance, agree? Yes or no?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
We are learning SAP FICO does not mean you are forgetting your fundamental basics, right? Now, when you know without a trial balance, no SAP project will go live, please verify this and then tell me. Literally verify this, ask anybody who is working in SAP, without a trial balance, can you complete a project? Can any project go live, is it possible? See, how many of you, how many of you get answer yes from your network? Then you will understand what is trial balance, what is the importance of it, how crucial, how critical it is, how important it is for any FICO consultant. You know the basically, every month you need to prepare PNL statement balance sheet, PNL balance sheet is possible only from TB, am I correct? You will prepare PNL, taking TB as the base, am I correct? Is that correct or not? Or directly you will prepare PNL without TB?
No, with, with.
TB is the basic, TB is the basic, sir.
TB is the basic. Now, you should know what is this TB, how this TB is coming, TB is possible even if I post a single accounting entry?
Yes.
Yes.
Right, PNL balance sheet is possible even if I post a single accounting entry?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Right? When we know that this is mandatory, this is possible even with a single debit, single credit, you should see all this, meaning you should start configuring SAP company code only after knowing TB PNL balance sheet. If you do not know this, you are creating a company code and you are doing all the entries left and right, you have never seen TB PNL balance sheet in your SAP, then what entries you are posting, for what purpose you are posting debit credit? You are posting entries to see what is the financial result? And we left and right post entries, one entry in this month, one entry in last month, one entry in next month, period is not open, you change the date. Your practice is not supposed to be an excuse, your practice is supposed to be proof of your confidence. Whatever you are practicing should be what is going to happen in a project tomorrow. Most of the times, if the, if you are in current month called August, you will be posting entries in last, last month, tenth, twelfth, fifteenth, next month, two months ago, three months ago, why? Will anybody do it in, in any part of the world? In the August month, will anybody record entries in July month? In any world? Will anybody record accounting interest in the month of Chulay as on today? Is it practically possible anywhere?
No, no.
Everybody will do it in the current month only. When you know, nobody does it in the entire world, why do you want to practice like that? Your practice becomes a habit, that is what will get registered in your mind. Tomorrow when you are in a project, no surprise, user is getting a period error, you might simply tell, change the date to last month. Can you tell that? When you are practicing, that is what you are doing, right? System is telling August month is not open, you are simply changing August month day to June, July month, yes or no? Somebody did this or not?
Yes, sir.
Right? Now, can you tell the same thing to your user? Okay, you change the date to last month, it is okay, that error will go. Next minute, your end user will say that, what kind of consultant you are, you don't even know the basics, basic accounting. Certain points you should not talk at all, meaning certain things you should not practice at all, it is good, you don't practice SAP, but don't practice with us. This is very difficult for you to come out because this is something what it say, it is creating a damage in your mind, in your understanding, for which you need to do a repair. Repairing is anywhere is difficult. You need to repair your understanding. To repair your understanding, you need to remove your understanding, you need to understand why my understanding is not correct. Why this is correct? Then you should feel okay, okay, then you need to replace your understanding with this understanding. Difficult for anybody, unnecessary confusions you will get everywhere. Because the way you are looking at the system, the way you are practicing, the way you are taking the example is not correct. Basic, basic points you are making mistakes. It is not all about how you are creating a setting in SAP, how you are pulling the report from SAP. What data you are feeding, what data you are extracting. Accounting is all about number. If you are not able to understand that number, you are completely lost. Any variation, any mismatch, your users are going to reach out to you. That this report is giving incorrect, this entry is not being posted, this problem, that problem, you need to understand and then help accordingly. There, you need all these points. Majoritely, when we practice three companies, you will be practicing Kia, Dell, Sony, or replace these three with any three names. So definitely you are going to create everything separate, 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 am I correct? Every setting is a separate, but when you are in real time, when you are in any project, you will be in a single company, everything looks a single to you. Meaning your understanding starts creating a confusion from there itself. Because you have not practiced in that way, or you have not understood in that way, or you have not prepared in that way. Even though if you practice one, two, three, you need to have clear understanding, how you are going to do it in a project, why you are creating separately here, you need to have a clear-cut understanding in your mind. Otherwise, that is going to be very, very difficult for you to understand things in project when you get a job. Nobody can help, these are the things, nobody will tolerate. These are the things, nobody will tolerate, no, you cannot even tell I am confused here. That is reason, people are losing the jobs after getting the job. When somebody is getting terminated, when somebody is thrown out from the project all of a sudden, just like that, nobody will throw, these are the basic, basic things they don't know. They will tell all the config steps, the basic, basic things they will not understand. What will anybody do with them? Forget about config, if you know the basic fundamentals, I can give you a document to refer and then do the config. If you do not know the concept itself, what will I do? I am also helpless, I am not here to teach you in my project. No company will teach you SAP FICO. Everybody will expect you know how to work as a consultant, how to think like a consultant. Not how to configure like a consultant. Configuration is like a data entry. Look at the step, know the T code, refer a screenshot, what fields to be filled up, fill up those field, control S, over, done. No rocket science there, even a pressure can do a config. Most of the projects, people will hire pressures, entry-level candidates to do the config. Not a senior person does the config. Junior persons, entry-level consultants who recently got the job, they will be doing the config because it is data entry, you don't need to apply your mind to do config. You don't need to apply your mind, you just need to refer the document, know the T code or refer the material to do configuration of previous project, control C, control V, that's all. Everything is part of your blueprint, everything is part of your key data structure, BPML and all, refer those document, control C, control V, controllers, configuration completed. For this, we are not supposed to put lot of effort, you should put effort in understanding the process, scenario and then make sure when you talk to somebody, the other person feels the difference. The other person realizes that, yes, this candidate knows the subject. This candidate knows how a consultant works. This candidate is talking, thinking like a consultant. That feel you should give to the other person, the way you talk, the way you work. Remember, the way your mouse cursor moving on the screen will also reveal your background, your confidence. I am not sure how many of you know it, the way your cursor is moving on the screen will tell what level of understanding you have on SAP. Because you will move three sixty degrees on the screen, but you don't click anywhere on the screen because you are scared, if I click here, I don't know what will happen. If I click there, I don't know what will happen, you will move, you will switch alt tab, alt tab, but you don't do anything. Quite common for most of the people because they are not confident. Why not confident? They don't know what will happen if they do it. Then what is the use of your practice? Whatever you are doing. Right? These points we need to keep in our mind so that when you are practicing, when you are defining the configuration and all, you will not be doing the things left and right, you will be conscious, you will be thinking, you will be trying to understand the logic, concept and then you will do it. It's okay even if you configure only single company code, it is still fine, provided you know all these basic fundamentals. If these fundamentals are not there, though you create hundred company code, it is not going to be of any help to you. Mark my words, this is the reality. Okay? All right. Find then, so remaining portion, we will continue tomorrow, as I said, tomorrow and the day after tomorrow, we will have class followed by the Q and A session, we will have the doubts clarification session. On all the doubts, questions, confusions, whatever you have, I will clarify on tomorrow and day after tomorrow, two days we will have minimum one hour for doubts clarification session. Be prepared accordingly. Whatever the questions, confusions, doubts that you have, please make a note of it so that you will not miss out in tomorrow and day after tomorrow's session. All right, find then, we will connect at the same time tomorrow morning, bye.
Thank you, bye.